You are watching Channel 97, Access LaPorte County. Coming up next, the May 23 meeting of the LaPorte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by going to www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. We're going to call the LaPorte County Council regular meeting for May 23, 2022 to order. If everybody please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Augur.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilwoman Graham Rosa.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
And Councilman Garner.
Present.
All sudden, present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the May 23, 2022 agenda.
I'd like to make the motion to approve these minutes with the following adjustments. On page two, under new business, I'd like to add a number five, a discussion on employee bonuses, and on number six, a discussion on volunteer firemen.
And then the minutes on the first.
And then on page one, sorry on that, the approval of the minutes will just be for the approval of the April 25, 2022 minutes, as we still have a few minor corrections on the 11.
Is there any other questions or corrections? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Approval of the April 25, 2022 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Gardner. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Anybody?
May I approach?
All the way approach, you mean?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa Piersakowski, Senator Township Trustee, 1108 West State Road 2. So what I've given you is where I'm at today on the funds. So you can see that we have $12,000. We did receive $1,186 back from Canterbury due to one of the IHCDNA applications that we were able to get processed. Again, we are still working with IHCDNA and many applications, but today I had Canterbury contact me with 13 more evictions. So with those evictions, we're looking at over $24,000 in outstanding. So if we went half of that, we're looking at $12,000. Plus, there's five more that she did not send me. Looking them over just quickly before I came, because I got these kind of late in the day, three of them have not reached out to us for IHCDNA, so I will definitely work on those with them, but they do owe three or more months of rent, so I don't know if they will wait. So my problem is, again, we might have to pay out some of this, but then get reimbursed once IHCDNA does pay them. So with that being said, with the amount of money I have left, I might use all of my funding. So is there still funding if I come back? Because I don't want to spend more than...
I think $25,000 for sure in there.
Yes, Mr. Yagowski.
All these new applicants, are they, are we still COVID-related?
I won't know until I meet with them. I'm starting to set up appointments.
These could just be once last month or the month before that, is right?
Yeah, they could be. Like I said, I've just started to go through. Some of them, I don't think we will fund, because we have a couple that they just moved in in the last couple of months. They paid one month of rent and then didn't pay anything, but I don't know what has happened because COVID is coming around again, so, you know, I can't answer that till I meet with them, Mark.
Thank you.
There's 22,000 that is unapproved.
22,000 unappropriated.
Okay.
So do you think you have it? It's hard to say, but I mean, you got enough till the next meeting?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to overspend if I know I'm not going to get the money, you know what I'm saying? I don't, because I'm going to be meeting with the clients in the next seven to 10 days. These are all evictions for June 28. So, and then I was talking with the attorney, we have some from Normity also, but Normity is one of the apartment complexes that does not want to work with us. But seeing that they have a lot of evictions again, I'm not sure what's happening, so...
Mr. Cunningham, you have a comment?
I would like to make a motion, since it's a transfer of money we've already allocated, a motion to transfer 11,000 of the 22 to our existing funds.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mr. Yagowski, to transfer $11,000 to the Senator Township Trustee. Is there any other questions or comments?
And thank you for the records.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Just for the record, the Michigan Township Trustee, I forwarded it to everybody, now we received it two weeks ago? You guys got a copy of it? From the Michigan Township Trustee, but they had not, at that point, they had not spent any of the county money, so they had nothing to report at that point, so I just want to let everybody know, so...
Okay, and then, second of all, I'm going to flip my hat to the Senator Township Volunteer Fire Department. We would like to thank you for the money that you allocated. I know that you added something for the volunteer fire departments, and I'm hoping that there's a resolution that's going to go through to help the volunteer fire departments moving forward now that the lit tax is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? State your name, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, Andy Snyder, LaPorte Fire Department Chief, 809 West 18th Street, LaPorte. One of the other hats that I wear is the Assistant Vice President of the County Fire Chiefs Association, and as Mrs. Piersakowski just mentioned, wanted to relay to the council the overwhelming thank you for, from the volunteer departments for that $10,000 disbursement to each of them. The monies were dispersed at the October, or the May 12 meeting about a week and a half ago, and again, all very much thankful to you and hope you'll consider this in the future for them. Secondly, back to LaPorte Fire Department, on behalf of LaPorte Fire Department and public safety in general, I would like to thank you again for your support of the public safety lit last month, and just again, we are very appreciative for your public, your support of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm representing the Cool Spring Volunteer Fire Department. I just wanted to...
State your names.
Warren Smith, I'm the Assistant Chief with the Fire Department. I wanted to reach out and thank you guys for the $10,000 check. It will go to good use, we've already pretty much spent it, we're buying new gear for everyone, so, and it's, but it helps, and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Thanks. Anybody on Zoom? Any on Zoom? Is there a handout? Public comment is now closed. Moving on, the department head reports. Any department head? Surprise.
Good evening, Jeremy Sebecky from the LaPorte County Parks Department. I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. Our playground out at Bloom is finally nearing completion. This was a project that started this, I mean, it started well before this, but construction finally started this early in the winter, kind of stalled out. We had some contractor issues, subcontractor issues, not showing up when they said they were going to show up, and so we finally got a new contractor show up from Virginia to install this playground. It's a very specialized installation, as you can imagine, a big playground like this. So I wanted to also mention, we originally had a ribbon cutting scheduled for June, but obviously we're not there yet, so we rescheduled that for August 13th, so it's a Saturday, 10 o'clock, we're going to do a ribbon cutting on this playground and hopefully get quite a few people out there. Also wanted to let you know about how, and I mentioned this at the commissioners' meeting the other night, about how much trouble we're having finding seasonal employees. As of last week, we had one out of five of our maintenance seasonal employees, and that's, we had two at one point, but one decided he wouldn't show up to work and wouldn't call, and so we ended up having to let him go, but, so we had one, and he's great, he's been there for several years, but just, he had a heart attack last night, so he's in the hospital, so now we're down to zero. So our full-time, our three full-time maintenance people are doing everything right now, trying to finish this playground installation, trying to, you know, do all of this stuff, so we are struggling, so if anybody knows anybody looking for a seasonal job, please have...
Is that primarily mowing?
And so that's the trouble we're having. We have had a few applicants that said, I just want to mow. Well, we need restrooms cleaned, we need, you know, we need trash picked up, we need, you know, after shelters are rented, they clean the shelters, they clean some of the rental halls after that, so there's lots of other things, brush trimming and stuff like that, so there's, there's a lot of stuff needing done, and, like I said, right now our full-time staff are doing all of it, and, so yeah, anybody knows anybody, please, please let us know. And lastly, I sent a note to Mr. Rosenbaum, Councilman Rosenbaum, the other day about our propane, and he was probably going to talk about this, but our propane budget's already gone for the year. And basically, the prices are so high that it just, it used it up already, and we usually run out right about the end of, you know, our first fill-up before the winter, but what I hope to do eventually is fill it up while it's, while the, while the prices are low in the summer, so I'm hoping I can get kind of an idea of how much money I would need, and maybe come back to you in a month or so and see if we can go ahead and request that money and get those filled up while it's lower, so just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. So, and I assume fuel will be the same way here before long, but if we don't have anybody doing all that other work, then, you know, we may not be using as much fuel either.
I appreciate it, and then that ribbon cutting, that new date, you're going to send that out?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be some information, not on that closer to date, but I wanted to give you a heads-up, so...
Any other questions for Jeremy?
Would you like to mention that June 7?
That June 7 is our public input meeting for the master plan, and that's at our regular board meeting, and it's at 5 o'clock, and we're having that at Bloom, so if anybody wants to come out and see the new playground...
So it'll be at the Grove Shelter?
Yeah, Grove Shelter at Bloom County Park, so...
And that's at June 7 at 5:00 P.M.?
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, just real quick, how many, how many are you short in part-timers?
So, I do have, I have one starting, two starting at the end of the week, if they, if they all pan out. They're both students, so they will only last until, or, you know, August, so we're going to be short. We have five positions, and right now we have two starting this week, I need at least three more.
How's the guy that had the heart attack?
He's doing okay, but I'm just not sure how much he's going to be able to do for quite a while, so, you know, we're going to be...
I wish him the best.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Any other department heads?
Can I give a report on the tax, reissuance of the tax bills or no?
Absolutely.
I'll do it from here if that suits your fancy.
Is that okay with everybody?
Regarding the issue, the reissuance of the tax bills, certified net assessed value's been approved by the DLGF, budget orders have been received, the tax abstract has been produced. We are at the point where we should be able to produce the so-called tab rate or tax rate chart this week, which is the item that gets advertised three times in the newspapers, it's the bottleneck in this whole process. Once that's advertised the first time, it's advertised a week later, and a week later, and then the tax bills can go out, so we're thinking, pardon me, we're thinking at this point, early June, we're working with the attorney here, Mr. DiMartino, as you should know, along with the treasurer and the assessor on matter of waiver of penalties for the May installment and how that would work, and so things are moving along, we're looking like early June right now.
And so, the plan is, is that once that date is determined, that when the tax bills are going to go out and says your payment needs to be made on such and such a date, when you guys have that collectively, between you, the treasurer, and, you know, anybody that needs to, then we'll set a special meaning, and then we can, we can waive the penalties through that date, I think is the plan, so, all right?
Yes.
So that's what we're just kind of waiting for you guys to...
And as the ordinance, or the resolutions specify so far, for that installment only and not previously existing, so it's clear to the public, not pre-existing delinquencies? Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else from department heads? Any other department heads? Department head meet, this report is now closed, lays on assignments. Terry? Connie?
I've talked to all my partners and everything, it's running smooth.
Great. Mike?
On May 18, I attended the commissioners' meeting, and on the 19th, with several of you people, several of the council people and law enforcement and the veterans group, we all attended a, or many of us attended the veterans ceremony for Wilbur Eugene Lawson in open house, he was a World War II veteran, and it was quite a, quite an honor to be there, and I know he was very much honored also.
How old is he?
He was 100 years old.
I was saying that, could you left that out of here?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, yep. 100 years young.
And he actually looks great.
Yes, he does. And on the 19th, I attended the Senator Township Trustee's open house for their new, new location.
Great.
That's it, thank you.
Earl?
I believe this is going to come up later in the meeting, so I'll save my big comment, but numerous and lengthy discussions with Clerk Heather Stevens.
Mr. Yagowski. Not at this time, sir. Mr. Rosenbaum.
Get ready. Attended the RDC, we have another meeting this Wednesday, attended the FMEC, we put together a treasurer's report that we are just breaking even, and we're expecting to have a decent year on rentals. You'll find out, if you get a chance to get to the fairgrounds, the buildings have been painted, the bleachers were removed, the grandstand is being currently painted at this point, I think the sandblasting is done, and we're going to start the repair work and have that ready just on time. You heard about the Parks Department. Last Friday, I attended the juvenile symposium held by the juvenile court system here, also attended the ribbon cutting, rolling prairie EMS and highway department with a few others, and then you've heard about the propane gas, so we're going to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Attended the FMEC meeting, RDC meeting, 911 Center, which I think Barb will be coming next month for permission, they're making some improvements over there in the 911 Center, and then, along with several other council members, we attended the police memorial that was at the old Elston Performing Arts place there, so that's always...
The infamous Stan Holdcraft Performing Arts Center.
Thank you. With that, let's move on to correspondence, any correspondence?
We have none.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 2022-05A.
Motion to read in title only?
Excuse me, just, so, the recorder's office has been handling these funds for years, and all we're doing is doing this ordinance in order to comply with some of the rules that the recorder learned about when she was down at a meeting. So since this is an ordinance, you have the ability to waive the rule and do it on one reading tonight, or you can do it just for first reading tonight, so it's your call.
We need to do both, but we'd still, to do it all tonight, we'd do two reads.
Correct, but, yes. So we would, the first motion that we would need, should you all want to do that, would be a motion to suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. Any questions on suspending the rules and having both readings tonight? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So we'll have both readings tonight, so I've read the ordinance once, I believe you started making a by-title only?
By-title only, yes, motion to read by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments on by-title only? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
By-title only?
This is the LaPorte County Council Ordinance 22, 2022-05A regarding the Recorder's Enhanced Access Fund.
Thank you. This is, our attorney stated, this is something that the funds have been there, this is just a...
Just to enable an ordinance for the funds that have been there for many years.
Right. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Councilwoman Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions? Hearing none?
Mr. President, I don't think we need to read all that we're asked, but for our viewing audience, I think it would make sense to read paragraph four, the last paragraph.
How about we do that on the second reading?
We do it on a second reading? That's fine.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
We're going to do a second reading.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. This would be on the second reading, ordinance 2022-05A.
Motion to read by title only with the exception of adding the fourth paragraph.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
This is the LaPorte County Council Ordinance 2022-05A, Recorder's Enhanced Access Fund. I'm sorry, I'm reading all of this except what?
Paragraph four is all you're reading.
In accordance with Indiana Code, Section 5-14-3.8.3b, all funds collected in the Enhanced Access Fund shall be specifically dedicated to the following purposes. One, the replacement, improvement, and expansion of capital expenditures. Two, the reimbursement of operating expenses incurred in providing enhanced access to public information. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and execution by the members of the LaPorte County Council. End of ordinance.
Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Any other questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next resolution is Resolution 2022-05A Sullivan Palatech Public Hearing. So, you want to speak before we open the hearing? So at this time, we're going to open a public hearing, so anybody that would like to speak on behalf or against the Sullivan Palatech Resolution 2022-05A. Tony, would you like to give an explanation there?
Mr. President, members of the council, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce for your consideration the Sullivan Palatech Project. This public hearing that you're hosting is to confirm the economic revitalization area designation. I know our sponsor, Councilman Yagowski, can speak further. We are fortunate to have with us the, excuse me, our plant manager slash Director of Operations, Mr. Scott Newcomb, who would be more than happy to give a brief overview of the company's planned expansion, but we, we seek your, your support and approval of this evening's designation as an economic revitalization area, and then approval of the statement of benefits for both real and personal property.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed. We'll move on to Resolution 2022-05A Sullivan Palatech Confirmatory Resolution.
President, motion to read 2022-5A by title only.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
With regard to Sullivan Palatech, this is a resolution of the LaPorte County Council determining that the qualifications for the economic revitalization area have been met and confirming a declaratory resolution adopted by the LaPorte County Council.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski.
If we have this time, please, could we have the manager come up and make a presentation? Or talk about it?
Hi, Scott Newcomb with Sullivan Palatech. How you doing? Doing fine, thank you.
Good.
So I just wanted to say that this is not the first time they've been up here, and in the past, they fulfill all the requirements, and it's a company that's well worth working in our community and in my area, so I thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else have any question?
Just a quick summary for folks at home and the audience, the expansion overview?
Yeah, we are putting in a 5,000 square foot facility, state-of-the-art, to be able to test our electrical equipment for emissions. A lot of this is government-based, that we have to be compliant in certain states by, actually, 2022 for three states, and everywhere else by 2025. So this just allows us to get all these regulations that we got to get done, new equipment, hiring people, and helping out LaPorte County.
How are we doing with hiring people?
Very difficult.
As a state of Indiana, been able to help out at all with their programs?
At this moment, no. We are doing everything for our HR department, from going to job fairs, to putting signs out front, to word of mouth with our employees, to try to get employees. Thanks, sir.
Is there any working with Ivy Tech at all?
We have done some job fairs with Ivy Tech and Blue Chip Casino just recently.
And just so that everybody gets to hear this, you have down here that you're going to spend over $800,000 on the improvements on the real property, and that you're going to be acquiring $2.8 million worth of personal property, which is the different types of equipment to be used in the inside of it. In addition to that, you have made mention of looking to hire 10 more people and adding another $400,000 at least to your payroll, and that in turn would give us some money back on those who live in LaPorte.
Yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, consider approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for the LaPorte County Park Department Office Manager.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Mullenhour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? LaPorte County Auditor, Accounts Payable Supervisor.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is LaPorte County Commissioners, upon request of the Historical Society and Museum Director. So I believe it goes through their board, I think, makes a recommendation to the commissioners?
Right. Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. LaPorte County Prosecuting Attorney requesting permission to hire a vacant part-time adult protection service case monitor position.
Good evening. This is for, obviously, my APS, my APS Director Catherine's here, but this is a part-time position because that's all we have in the budget from Downstate FSSA. We're trying to put in for, and their budget period is, we're just about to put in a request for a budget, we're going to be requesting for full-time, but right now, we just, basically just want to have the process started so we can at least interview and be ready to go July 1st. They wouldn't start till July 1st because that's when the budget money is there, but we're going to, and hopefully we get more money, but if not, it'll just be part-time.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Next one, discussion on holding back the tally of election night, on election night. Mr. Yagowski.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I know I've talked to numerous people here that were on, on, on our council and other people around. You know, it's just the perception how we, how we handle things in Laporte County, and this is, this is not just on our local media. There was five major outlets that were reporting to other states, and they go, you know, we're pertaining to Laporte County's being, holding up the votes. Um, I wish, I wish some of this stuff would've came out before, and, uh, we would, with that point, we would be able to, uh, at least put our input to it, but it wasn't. Um, I asked that night if we could at least go on the news media to tell them what we're doing, how, how much longer extend. That didn't happen. It's just perception, and there's enough problems with our election, but we spend more money than we've ever spent on elections, more money. We've got, you can vote anywhere you want, they got, they got a van going around, and we had, we had the lowest turnout again. That's just perception of people, how they feel about it, and I'm disappointed on that. I've, I've been doing this for 30 years, cause I, I would help other elect, people that were running for election. It's always fun to have the runners, you get your numbers, you, you have your reports back and forth. It's a, it's, 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 it's embedded into our system.
Tradition.
Tradition, thank you, sir. And so, I would like to say that, that I'd like to go back to what we, we originally had and move forward with this thing.
As you, your opinion, obviously, we don't have control over the-
I said, I would like.
I know.
I agree.
So that like means my opinion, if you want to defend that.
Mr. Cunningham?
I would weigh in in, um, agreement with Mr. Yagowski. It's not a Democrat or Republican issue. We're pretty split up here evenly, and, um, I don't think Democrats or Republicans, either one, were happy on election night, and it could've been, um, lessened, the effect could've been lessened if they had just known in advance. The truth of the matter is, the clerk in her first election busted butt to do this thing right, and then she takes a lot of heat, because it looks like it's on her, and it's not really on her. But, obviously, we made a decision after the polls were closed at 6 o'clock, that we weren't gonna release figures until later in the evening, because she didn't know that, or she wouldn't have set up a, a get-together at the Civic Auditorium, where hundreds of people were there to hear the results. So I, I just think that, um, as he said, perception, perception from the outside looking in is added to by the perception of those of us on the inside that expected to hear some results, uh, at 7:00 or 7:30 or whatever, and/or somebody come down here and talk to these guys that are sitting right here at this counter, trying to kill radio time for three hours. You saw it. Some of you saw that.
Glad I wasn't there.
Yeah, you're glad you didn't do that again. So, if, if it's gonna, if we're not gonna release the results until they're all done, people should've known that in advance. Everybody would've gone home and waited for the results.
And I understand, I think from previous one, there were some, uh, some things didn't come out right, and they released some numbers that they had to retract and redo, so, uh, to be cautious, but-
But by the same token, the day after these were released, we find out that there were two precincts were voted in the same precinct. Unfortunately, that didn't create any problems, because, but it wasn't 100% foolproof anyway. My waiting didn't make it magically 100% perfect.
Right. Definitely. Did you wanna speak?
Yeah.
Chuck Waterson, Election Board President. Uh, Nelson Picardo, the Vice President, couldn't be here this evening. Um, he asked me to pass on this, uh, letter to the council. Um, I can read it if that's what you guys would like, just so everyone else can hear it too. So we'll start with his comments, and I'll move on to mine. Um, he's a little long-winded here, but it starts with, "Dear members of the council, but for my son's fourth grade recognition tonight, I'd be there in attendance. I have spoken to Chuck Waterson regarding this letter, and he's agreed to read it into the record to state my position regarding your discussion about item 3 under new business, discussion on holding back a tally on election night. I, along with Mr. Waterson, have stated several times now that this was a bipartisan decision that he and I made to ensure that the results shared with the public be as accurate as possible. I stand by that decision. We wanted to avoid any mishaps or issues with providing wrong information, as was the case in 2020, when results were released in batches and the reports were wrong. Although all those issues were corrected and our third-party vendor microvote explained the issues, we wanted to fully avoid anything like that happening again. We felt that sure way to do that was to wait until the end to release any unofficial reports. I will concede that we should've informed the media that we plan on releasing results at the end of the count, so that they would have had a chance to properly prepare. We certainly will look to do that in the fall, if that decision, if that's the decision that's made. I hope you all understand that the process in tallying votes is not a quick and easy process. We have to retrieve hundreds of machines from across the county, which is by way the largest county in the state by land area. Polls close at 6:00 PM, it takes some precincts close to 35 to 40 minutes to get back to the courthouse to turn in all their materials, including the voting machines. We then have to tally all the machines with our vendor microvote, that takes time, and it is a delicate process where many hands must pay close attention to details. As always, we will learn from this experience and approve upon it. In the fall, we will see what we can do to maybe release early vote and absentee voting numbers prior to the final official, unofficial report. I think releasing those numbers is something that can be done in a safe and efficient manner, and it gives folks some initial reporting prior to all the voting machines coming in and being tallied. Again, please understand the fact that we wanna give accurate information in a reasonable amount of time, instead of rushed partial results that could potentially have errors. In a time when so many people question election results and believe in half-baked conspiracies, you all, as elected officials, will agree with me that we want to ensure that the reports that we share with the voters are correct and accurate. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to address any concerns that you may have, or if you wanna call or email me, I'm happy to talk further. Sincerely, Nelson Picardo, Vice President, uh, of the Laporte County Election Board."
Anybody have any other? Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, those are his comments. My comments are, so this was my first election on the board, um, in Laporte County, or in any county, for that matter. I was appointed right after the fiasco of the 2020, uh, primary election with all these issues. So you have to understand, when I was appointed, I was picking up this mess that we were aiming to correct with this. Now, we made the decision, we would've given advance notice, but we made the decision right as the machines were coming in, and it was a lot of machines, too many machines. I think we've learned a lot from the mistakes as far as the machines going out, um, and it's not the, the polling pads, those were great, we had a couple issues with those that we handled. The voting machines, we sent out way too many for a primary, in my opinion. Uh, so the machines that weren't used, we couldn't just take the poll workers' word for it that they weren't used, we had to tally each one of those. And to do that, you literally have to pull the machine out and go through them. We did that with about 100 machines, maybe more. Um, to address some of the concerns with, uh, I think it was, uh, Councilman Cunningham said about the get-together at the Civic. I had no idea about the get-together at the Civic, and I had no idea about the tradition with unofficial results. Would that have changed my decision on the election night? I doubt it. But now that I do know about the tradition, and, um, people were very upset with, I get it's, it's a primary, but people were upset that they've been working for a year, year and a half, to get ready for this campaign and this election night. So, in the fall, um, I anticipate coming up with some type of structure to release, uh, early results. Uh, the reason why it was so tough now is because we have one person with microvote who understands the entire system. He's got some assistants that are literally helping count the, the votes and, and that process, but he's the only one who can, uh, pull these reports. It would've taken so much time if we did it every precinct or every half hour for him to do these reports, stop counting, and go from there. But we stand by the decision we made, and again, it was, it was me and Nelson who made the decision. Heather wanted to release the results early. Uh, again, I was appointed right after the fiasco, we wanted to avoid it. This may not have been the way to go. Uh, for sure, I would, uh, alert the media if I could do it all over again. Um, I had no idea they were over here killing, uh, radio time for three hours, but we talked to them afterwards, and, um, that's, that's where we stand on that. So, again, I haven't been approached by anybody that has, that has been talking to other people saying something was wrong with the decision we made. It's really easy to find me. I'm not a hard person to find. If you wanna find out the truth, I've already said it here, I said it at the election meeting, I said it to the media. If you want any other details, find me, I'm here. I'm, I'm not gonna hold anything back, that's not what I'm here to do. But the, the thing that really irked me was just the idea that we were hiding something, or me as, me and Nelson were hiding something. It's, it's just not-
I don't think that was ever implied.
I heard it from, from some people, but then again, there's Facebook warriors everywhere.
Well, there you go.
Yeah, so that's, that's my stance, and I'd be happy to ask any, or answer any questions you guys may have, uh, now.
Mr. Yagowski?
So again, I, I agree with most of it. I talked to you that night on the phone, so you and I talked. That was me on the phone, Darlene, yeah, passing the phone.
Oh, okay.
That was me, you and I were talking on the phone. Uh, and that's why I suggested you come down here and present this to the media, because they're sitting there, you know, they're, you know. The other part of it, I think somebody just said, with all the talks about the election that, it is perceived that way. When you have national news that's looking for Indiana, you're gonna, this will happen more in the general, it was, we're the only state, and it's said because of us. It wasn't because of anybody else, and I'm talking about CNN, Fox, and, any, all the major ones, MSNBC. So it's that, it's not only required by us, it's required, the numbers are required by numerous people, especially in general elections we have over here, where you're going to, our vote affects Lake, or affects, um, Porter and, um, County and, um, and, uh, CHO County, cause we have left, cause we cross areas, as you well know. So, again, I wasn't here to chastise you, but I'm here to ask that we have a better system, cause this, this, this was a, a fiasco, because, because people are, they think something is going on. So, I, 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 I am, no, I actually deal with a lot of people, make a lot of phone calls, and you know, I've been a runner for Democratic side, I've called Republicans, we give numbers back and forth, where, where everybody's on it. It, it is a longstanding tradition to work it that night, that way, and so, I just don't wanna see it happen again that way, that's what I, thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, one comment you might wanna inform, Mr. Picardo, we are not the largest, we're the second-largest landmass county in Indiana, behind Allen County, who has a lot more people as well. Granted, they are an hour ahead of us, so their votes were way in ahead of ours.
So now we're gonna get letters from Allen County saying, more, how come you're saying you're the largest county?
Thank you for quoting Nelson, and not me on that.
Yes, I, I said, you know, you might wanna inform me, that was in his letter.
Yeah.
And, and then the second thing is, you know, you say there was bipart, bipartisan support, it was two people. You're a Republican attorney, and Nelson is a Democratic attorney, correct?
Correct.
Well, there was a bipartisan groups of people getting together, for example, Mr. Heineck is back here, he and a Republican sheriff's candidate were at the same location awaiting results. Is that correct, Ms. Heineck? A lot of people were at that get-together, correct, Ms. Heineck? And, that's a bipartisan group as well. So, it just comes down to think this thing through before you make a decision. You're saying, well, we didn't, well, you knew how many machines went out to the precincts, didn't you?
Did I personally? No. I knew after they were all gone and the room was empty that every machine was sent out, but that's not our decision to make as, as the election board, I believe that's the clerk's decision.
Could you seal those machines that day, and everybody opens it up, and that way, if the seal's not broken, you, you don't have to worry about the machine?
I would have to look into the legality of that, but I mean, that, that sounds like a great idea, but the, we just couldn't accept, accept that.
I get it.
These weren't you, so we understand.
I just look for an idea, if we seal the machines, and then you, you break the seal when you're there, I think that's a good idea anyway.
Right. I agree 100%. Yeah, no, it's not an interruption, I just think that communication was so bad that we have to figure out a way to avoid this happening in the future. You would need to announce two weeks in advance that we're not gonna announce the results as they come in, and let people know, because I'm sure that somebody rented the Civic Auditorium two weeks in advance, at least. It seems to me like, as you just said, if you pre-think this through, and you've got early voting, and, and, um, same-day voting, and different, it looks to me like if you dribble a little bit out at 7 o'clock, and then come back at 7:30 or 8 o'clock, you have a pause and release some results, and then at 9:30 you're done, that makes a lot more sense than waiting until 10 o'clock or 10:30 and saying, all right, half the people have gone to bed. So I will look at tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I agree with that now, for sure.
We do appreciate all you, you guys are doing, and for the record, I wasn't invited to the Civic, so.
Me neither, I was stuck in a room.
You needed an invite?
Yeah, I didn't get invited to that, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, let's move on to the discussion on the budget hearing, setting the actual dates, because I don't believe we, what's your ideas?
Don't we usually do it, um-
We usually do it the end of, uh, July.
Right, and we got a council meeting on the 25th, I think that's what we did last year, and maybe the year before.
So we're looking to do the 25th, 26th, and 27th, those three dates? Is that everybody who's thinking?
26th and 27th?
No, 25th, 26th, and 27th.
Council meeting on the 25th of July.
The third date, just in case?
Yeah.
I think we're good 26th and 27th, 28th, that's the third date, not have it on the same day as the council.
Yeah, cause it's a long day for us.
I think we usually do it, but if-
The sheriff actually provides dinner for us when we do that.
I mean, I understand, we can do it, and we have, I think we also have to understand that it's all our council members, our council meetings have been running much longer-
Than they have in the past, which puts an extreme drain.
So you're saying the 26th and 27th?
Tuesday, Wednesday.
There's a redevelopment commission meeting on the 27th in the afternoon at 4:00 PM.
We should be done by 3 o'clock, but we just set our schedule, we'll be done and clear the room.
Anybody?
And then leave Thursday in case we need to.
Fine.
Thursday is a wrap-up day if necessary, right? Well, we have new things this year to work out.
Yeah.
And I, and I think Mr. Uh, Yagowski brought this point up earlier in discussion, you know, we're just pushing this thing further and further back. When I first served on the council, we had this the last week in August, and now we're a month back already, cause we gotta get stuff in earlier and earlier and earlier, well, I mean, think about, we set a budget last year in August, and look how things have changed.
Right.
This year, so, but now we're gonna move back to July, we're at the halfway point of a year, trying to make a budget for the next year, which, if we have another inflation in our year like we're having now, we might as well not even do a budget, just say, we'll wait and guess. That's kinda what we're doing.
Is there any other, so, any other recommendations, or is that good with everybody?
It's good with me.
26th through to 28th are we looking at, or are we going with the 25th through to 27th?
We've never, to my, I've never, we've never been held over a third day.
No, but you-
It's not, it's just, I mean, it just, it's there, it's there just in case, so we can reserve the room in case we need it, yeah.
26th and 27th, then, right?
Yep.
So we're starting on Tuesday, and Wednesday, and possible Thursday.
Right. Right.
And we need to clear out around 3:00, 3:30 the latest.
But not to be the bad, you know, everybody knows that the big question is, you know, we're at $5, we'll be at $6.50 for gas come that time, so, as we all know, that's, like Mr. Cunningham said, this year's gonna be a tough one, it's not gonna be, let's run through this.
Do we need a motion on that, or just, we're all good with that? All right. So, let the record show that. The next item is item number five, employee pay bonus periods. There's been some talk with the auditor's office about when the bonuses are to be paid, and can be paid, and just for the record, the minutes, and I think, I've talked to several members in the finance committee, the minutes from that meeting actually says it's to be paid in June and December, not if you're employed at the end of June or December, it's just, it needs to be paid in the months of June and December.
Forgive me, but I think ultimately, that when we went back to the salary ordinance that was passed, that it was phrased differently, that for the six months...
These are the minutes.
Yeah. So...
So, does anybody...
The measuring, I'm sorry.
Does anybody see, have any objection to it being paid in the months of June and December?
I just want to be clear with that, the ordinance, and if we did the minutes wrong, I apologize, we have to verify that, I'll take responsibility for that, but I'm not certain of that, that the measuring periods referred to very specifically were six-month periods, for the mid-year point was June, and I believe the other was end of year, copy of the salary ordinance. The issue, I mean, we, you and I spoke about, my office spoke with you and others on the finance committee about the notion of having that year-end bonus being measured at December 31st, was, June's not a problem, but the year-end bonus was particularly problematic because of the holidays and the overtime, and people don't get to have a Christmas. The problem with resetting that period to the end of November is it's still overlapping to that Christmas period, so, I mean, the way I see it, there's potentially two options, I mean, we aim to please, of course, but one is having the measuring period be the end of October, where that pay then would happen in mid-November, which is just before Thanksgiving, so they're getting a bonus in their pay that comes right before the week of Thanksgiving, which is nice, or you could leave the measuring period at the end of December, but they're not gonna get the bonus until towards, probably the last pay period in January.
Well, then, they won't get the first one in June till July 15.
Correct.
Which is not, I mean...
We have to change the date that you're using to measure, since May 31st, and November 30th, that's fine.
Turn your microphone, Earl.
Man, the minutes clearly say the checks would go out in June.
In December.
In December.
But then, the salary ordinance may have...
And you've got employees already complaining, because they've now heard via the grapevine, that they're not gonna get them until January, correct?
Well, the salary, the salary ordinance set the measuring periods at six-month, six-month...
Well, move the, move the starting period for that six-month measurement back, so it doesn't have to, an employee to get their check in June, doesn't have to be here through the end of June, they have to be here through the end of May, or end of April, I don't care what that period is, we can determine...
We need to redo the salary ordinance, Mr. Attorney?
I can't talk without seeing it. Let's, we'll get the ordinance, we'll take a look at it, and we'll have to revisit.
You might have a special meeting...
Next month is the end of June.
You might have a special meeting?
But...
Yeah. So, here, I guess this would be my recommendation to the auditor, if there's no objection from the council, that you look at it, do, get these, do these checks with the idea that it's the end of May for the cutoff date, and then if we need to correct this at our June meeting, at our special meeting, we will do that, is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, that's fine, if you just do it in...
So, that way, the checks go out in June, and then we'll do the same thing for the end of November, the checks will go out sometime in December. Is that, is anybody...
I think you're creating that same hardship for people, I think I was very clear about the part, that if you're end of November, you're creating a hardship, my staff has been clear, that takes their Christmas away from them, if it's the end of November.
Why can't they do it in 15 days?
I don't know, we'd have to, my recommendation would be, we meet together again, the whole point about, the whole point about changing this was that they didn't have their Christmas payment.
We can take that discussion offline, I don't wanna go into that part now.
They could, they could even start it in Novem, how the heck did you pull that, they could even start it in November, they just have to verify that the people are still employed at that date.
You've talked about having a special meeting to update the late fees for the, or waive the late fees of...
Yeah, probably.
This counts the year before.
The other thing is, I don't understand, is the Christmas period, it's not like a school system where you're closing down two weeks of Christmas time, where the counties open, aren't they? I mean, the county might be open until the 23rd or 24th, whatever it is, I don't know what that date is, or 22nd, it's not like the county's closed for two weeks.
So, and they could actually start it, I think they could, this is my belief, they could start it in beginning of November, and they just need to verify who's still employed at the end of November.
I think the problem is that, with all due respect to the council, but when you're doing raises and bonuses at the same time, you're putting, if you could do the raise in August or September, it might be more doable, when they're hit with...
We hope, we do hope to have the salaries set before December.
I don't think so.
So, hopefully, you're not doing that all at the same time. Mr. Attorney?
So, it says, "If employed on January 1st, 2022, full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus at mid-year." So, once they're employed on January 1, they get their mid-year bonus, so it's not gonna impact the 2022, the June.
Read the rest of it, though.
Okay. And a $1,000 bonus at the end of the year. Each bonus is to be prorated by the number of full months employed, and each respective bonus, January through June, and July through December.
That's the point there.
Yeah, so, but not for the first chunk, says if you're employed...
They've already paid that one off.
That's when it starts, so, I could see how the auditor says that you're going through the first six months, so it would need to be amended to May 30.
I think, I think the phraseology, I mean, it's whatever the council's intentions are, obviously, I'm just the auditor, but, but, maybe the free, oop, I was looking at it.
Sorry, I'm just sharing it, so...
I mean, it says at, that first two sentences, it says, "Employed on January 1st, 2022, full-time employees are to receive a $1,000 bonus at mid-year," it really should have said for mid-year 2022, because we can't pay a bonus at the, you know, at June 30th, for a pay period that ends, you know, it takes time to get a payout.
Yeah, but I don't know that they're call, I don't know that they're calling that June 30th, they're saying at mid-year, so whenever that pay period comes.
Well, what was Councilman Rosenbaum's intention, in terms of the measuring periods? There was a lot of discussion, debate in the council, so he had these six-month periods set up, what were his intentions?
His motion is June and December.
Right.
Is what the minutes were.
Were those your measuring periods? Were those your, you know...
The intent was to be able to pay it in June, and the measuring periods were put together, thinking that it could be paid immediately in June, once we knew that the people were employed, however, it's impractical, and therefore, this should be changed with the intent to be able to pay it in June, and therefore, we should change the periods, and if we have to do a five-month period for the first one, and a six-month period to get to November 30th, then that's what we'll do at the next meeting. But we should not, we should not, well, we can make a motion, but we still have to go through...
We can make a motion to change it, and then we still have to bring that before us to vote on, so, at our next meeting, so, is that a motion, Mr. Rosenbaum?
So, that would be a motion to change the measurement periods from January through May for the first one, and then from June through November for the second one payable in December, and then the following year would be from December 1st through May 31st.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Just for matter of clarification, we'd have, if this is voted on, we'd have to open this back up.
To do that, or now, you're recommending now?
Yeah.
So, let's, let's hold off on your motion, Mr. Rosenbaum? We need to have a motion to open the salaries for 2022?
Yes. Motion, Mr. President, I make a motion that we open 2022 salaries.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, to open the 2022 salaries. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Rosenbaum?
Make the motion to change the measurement dates for the first one due in June, to be a five-month period, and then the second one to be, would be January 1st through May 31st, and then the second period to be from June 1st through November 30th, and then the final one would be from December 1st, that's for '23, so we can't put it in there, so just for those two.
And I presume, if I may, I presume a five-month, a five-month proration, so it's...
Yes.
Five months?
Mr. Attorney?
And that's what I was gonna ask, you, so you're gonna pay the bonus full, as long as they work 10 months in the year?
No, it's gonna be 11 months, first five months, and then the next six months.
Yeah.
Because we're not gonna go back to a period that we already supposedly covered, and so, we want to get these payments, so, if they're gonna get a little bit better benefit, let's give them a little bit of benefit.
Okay.
Five-month proration, six-month proration? Five months, six months?
And then, next year, we'll do another six.
Was there a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour, and second by Councilwoman Graham Rosset, and comment by Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, just make it clear, I understand what you're doing, it's standing out, but if that vote that night was, there were three members at least that I can remember, who vote, who voted nay, because of the fact that we believe they should have been paid at one time, so, even though he's bringing this up as a correction, I'm just, I'm still gonna vote no, because I mean, we have three nays on that, if you look...
Can we vote to change it, if we voted against it?
Hmm.
Or would this just be for the...
Just changing the time period?
No.
All right.
It's not, yeah.
Just ask, just...
You put the people voted no.
All right.
It was, it was a split vote.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So, we can't do it, so, the other three can't vote, right?
No, he didn't, he said we can vote.
Yeah, so you're not, the bonus is already in, all you're doing is moving to amend that time within it, you know what I mean?
You're not agreeing to the structure.
You're not going back on your original vote.
Still, nay, still. You already voted. Just kidding. Let the record show. All right.
We had one nay.
Yes. Moving on, volunteer fire department bonus, so, we're talking with our attorney, Mr. DiMartino, as Mr. Yagowski stated, that it cannot be in an ordinance or resolution that we just give the volunteer firefighters pay every year, a chunk of money out of the lit money, or the ARP, or wherever we decide to take it out of, but I would like to, where do you go?
Andy Snyder.
Andy Snyder, come on down, because Andy would, had called me and asked, would it be possible for the Fire Chiefs Association to make that request on behalf in the first of the year, so, what has to happen is, the departments all have to petition the council for the money, every year. So, instead of 16 separate people doing it, and somebody might forget to do it, could the Chiefs Association do it on their behalf, and so, that's what he's looking for their, our support to do that, to allow that to happen.
Yeah, basically, we would be taking care of the late work, and whether it be one individual petition, or 16 individual letters of requests, we'd go ahead and take care of getting that each year at the first of the year, and then present it to the council at that time, so it's not overlooked. Would be nice, too, I forgot to mention earlier, the May 12th meeting that the checks were handed out at, that was the most attended meeting I've ever been to for a Chiefs Association meeting, so, we could maybe get that rolled in, and get our attendance bumped up, too.
Mr. DiMartino, would it be acceptable to have one request signed by all 16 departments?
Yeah, but when you look, if you're going, if you're gonna use the public safety lit monies, there has to be some substance in the request, it needs to be for education, it needs to be for equipment, it needs to be for things along those lines, it just can't be a bonus.
Right, right, yeah.
You know what I mean? So, it just needs, so whether you're gonna allocate it by department, within that one document, that's fine, but it needs to meet the requirements for public safety.
And each one needs to state what they're using it for.
Yeah, well, and training, whatever.
Equipment.
Yes.
Yeah, equipment, I can tell you right now, there shows short on equipment, that that would be the easiest one, right there.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
So, you understand, you do it one letter, have each department sign.
Yes.
Thank you.
We would be happy to do that, thank you.
We go with that, support that, yes.
All right. So, is there a motion?
Do you need a motion of support for that? Then I'll give you a motion of support.
Yeah, no, I don't think...
Don't think we do?
We just clarify.
So, but, brings the question up, which I discussed earlier, what are you all gonna do with the lit? Are you gonna budget that at budget time, or are you gonna want the pub, are you gonna want the Chiefs Association to come back at budget time, just like anybody else that you would be, you know, budgeting for their departments, or...
I think that the intent of this council was, when we originally gave them the $10,000, we thought it was something we should carry on for years and years, because they're the first responders, the volunteer fire departments are the first responders in many, many cases, and they're all volunteers, they're not, they're not getting a salary.
I get, I get that.
I understand what you're asking, is, I think that we just request they do the letter every January.
I think we're better off to get it in July.
I think you're better...
So that we can put it in the budget.
Right, because if these are gonna be tax funds that are gonna be used, you know, it's not gonna be ARP funds like we've had in the past, that if it's gonna come from the public safety lit, it's gonna be something that...
So, we could actually budget that, if we had that at budget hearings, we could actually put that in the budget for this, for that year?
Yeah.
We do it annually.
It does in July, we do it for '23.
It'd be an automatic thing, but every year.
Yeah, I think that would be good, because right now, as I just mentioned, those were distributed in May.
Right.
If we continue on that timeframe, just bump it out to July with the request.
Excellent.
Make sure that we enter that in.
Thank you.
Okay, so as we sit now, you're gonna present something at this year's budget hearings in July?
Yes, we can do that. I know that there was some consideration that the ARP funds would be used for next year, but if that's not the case, we'll make sure that we go ahead and...
Well, this council, this council's probably gonna change, so we can't get that commitment for next year, they would have to...
No, we'll be happy to put that together.
And to make it easier for Mr. Snyder, so he doesn't have to come during the day, our next council meeting is the night before the budget hearings, if you want to present that letter, hand-delivered to the president, we can enter into the budget hearings, correct, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Absolutely.
Friday, Monday night, the 25th.
Okay.
If that's easier for you than coming to us.
Sure.
State your name, please.
Lisa Pierzakowski, Senator Townsend trustee. Okay, so my question is, so is this in, instead of doing a resolution, to show that the volunteer fire department is gonna eat, so they're gonna have to request this each year?
Right.
So, it could be that we have a year when we don't get it?
Correct. We cannot bind future councils, so there's nothing set in stone, but there's, but it is, is in the statute that the townships and the departments can petition the council for those funds.
But, it was also stated by the state, that there could be a resolution, that the townships were allowed funding also, like with the county and the city, that the townships could receive lit money also, but it had to be a resolution done by the county, the same time that the lit was being passed, so that's, you and I discussed that.
We didn't do that, we're just asking for the letter.
Right, so what I'm, so my question is, it's gonna have to be a letter each year, but it could be one year that they don't receive it.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, the city and county will get theirs every year, but the townships might not get it, that's, that's just my question.
There's, and that's your jobs, to hold all these people accountable, to make sure they do that, and I'll be right there with you.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm on that side, I'll be right there with you. So, we don't need a motion? I think we need a motion.
Make, have somebody move.
I can, need to.
So moved.
All right, there you go.
Second.
Mr. Graham Rosset and Mr. Rosenbaum. So, and the resolution is, is that the Chiefs Association can come on behalf of the 16 departments?
The motion is.
Correct. Did I say resolution?
Yep.
Lisa, how's your thinking about resolutions?
Good thing she sat down.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old business, there is none, appropriations and transfers, Lepore County Recorder requesting permission to transfer monies from the County Identification Security Protection Fund to the County Recorder Perpetuation Fund, in the amount of $76,000.
Mr. President, so...
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any other questions or comments?
I do have a question, how much money do you have in your perpetuation fund?
I believe it's over $600,000.
Okay, so, just making sure, it's plenty of money, and so, it's not a big deal?
Yeah.
Got it?
Just to clarify, this is a fund that basically hasn't been touched for years, because it's meant to be used for redacting social security numbers, and it's pretty much impossible to figure out how much time we spent on redacting social security, then taking out of it, so that's why the state gives us the option of moving the money, so then, it's in a perpetuation fund, and as every year, we use quite a bit of it for just, you know, everything in the office, saving the county quite a bit of money, so...
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item, Lepore County Prosecutor requesting permission to transfer monies from Child Support 4D Incentive Fund, part-time pay, $15,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagowski. Any questions or comments?
It'd be good if you'd just give us a minute explanation.
Yeah, and what this is, is that we're using two part-time, one of my investigators has had medical health, and he's been off, and we have, we hired, we brought back Dwayne Miller to do part-time serving of summonses, and Chuck Whelan is also part-time helping out and doing investigations and that, and we only have budgeted $5,000, so we're running through that, and this should get us through the rest of the year, and this is, obviously, money that is hard for us to spend out of the incentive fund. Technically, I'm not sure if, I think we can spend that money without a council approve, but I'd rather just come here.
Well, that sounds pretty sure.
Well, that's what they tell me.
I have a quick question for you, how come the sheriff, the process servers don't serve your paper? Since we're paying them to do that and...
Well, I know, and, but the thing is, to burden them with all this, it would just take too much time, so I don't want, I don't want to overburden the sheriff.
I don't think they're...
I know Heath has now gone to process serving, so we could really have him do that, but...
My understanding is they, they have the time, they could handle what you're serving.
I'm not sure that, I don't think we wanna do that, we have a lot of, on these, on these child support cases, we serve a lot of people, so I, I mean, it's money that we, we have to spend this money anyway out of the incentive fund, we're, this is money...
I believe Mr. Yagowski can find a place for you to spend that money.
We had that meeting, and we discussed that.
Yes, we did.
So this is one way we're trying to spend it, though, and this will, will unburden the sheriffs, I mean, we've been doing this now for, for a while, since they reduced that and used some of those positions for jail staff, as you know, I think they're down to...
Four.
Three, they're down to three, yeah. So for them, they've gotta do all the civil process, they've gotta do everything, you know, so we, we're trying to take that little chunk out of there and help them out, so let me do that.
Let us continue. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good night. Next item is Lepore County Sheriff requesting permission to increase the salary of the Director of Programs/Treatment Services Job Classification Increase from a PAT four to a PAT six. He has the funds for it this year, he's asking for approval on this, he has the funds for this year, but at budget hearings, he's gonna be here to ask for the, that increase in next year's budget.
Motion to approve.
Can we get the amount? I'll second, then can we get the amount?
Do you know what the amount is?
The amount that we're gonna be asking for next year, or in this year's?
This year's, please.
No, we're not gonna ask for any money this year.
What's the change, what's the increase in the salary?
Um, I sent you an email, I believe it was $10,000 and some odd dollars.
Good enough.
And this did go through the...
About $10,300.
Yeah. This did go through the employee, what do you guys call yourself?
Employee Evaluation.
Evaluation Committee, and they're the ones that make the recommendation on this, so.
So were, were new tasks added that, that it jumped to, from comment four to six?
Yep. Went from PAT, PAT four to PAT six? No, however, requirements for that person to do their job, they have a master's degree, and also in comparing that person's responsibility to the responsibility of someone in the same position at the Juvenile Services Center, there was considerable discrepancy in the pay, and we felt what was fair was fair, so that's why we sent it to the finance, or the Personnel Committee for an evaluation on it. I know Monique Thomas is on the line, she should be able to answer some of that as well, because she was involved in this.
Yes, we met, the Job Classification Committee, we did meet, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, we met, and we, it was based upon the education, it was based on some of the duties, and, and the longevity of Ms. Walker, Robinson Walker, being in that position. We, it was, it was, I mean, pretty much needed because of the critical care that she does in that jail, and also the mental health resources that's needed, so it is, I think that it does suffice what she does, and it is justifiable in case anybody else comes in that position, that we are getting a qualified person, somebody who knows what they're doing, and that they're providing a service to those in jail who are, who, who need that.
Mr. President, question. Mr. Yagowski?
Okay, I know, I think, I think she might have misspoke, you said there were no actual increases, it was education, and you can't give raises to longevity, because the next person comes in, gets the same raise, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. No, I don't, that didn't have anything to do with the longevity.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just basically saying, like, what she's done, I mean, it's not based on her, it's the position itself, we classified it based on the position itself, we re, we looked at the whole job description, the previous one that was there, there are some little tweaks and, and stuff in that, in that job description, and there's also that education piece that, that should mirror what that person can do in that jail.
So on the committee, what was the reason why it couldn't go from a four to a five? Why from four to a six? That's education increase, that's why?
No, the way we did it, we do it on a point system, and it went from four to six, that's how it turned out, and I think what she meant with the value, with the longevity is, is that the salary's not set, you know, we set the salary, but her longevity brought it up to that amount that would be a $10,000 a month increase.
Right, they added that on after they, they went, so.
Gotcha.
$10,000 a month?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said.
Annually.
Annual.
Yeah, annual, but all over.
A new person coming in at that level, at a PAT six, they would come in at that entry level where PAT six is, I think it's somewhere, like, forty, fifty-two thousand, based on that? I'm not sure exactly what's the, 'cause I don't, I don't have it pulled up here in front of me, but I'll get that, I'll, I'll, I'll get that, that rate in there.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
Thank you, is anybody else having any other que, oh, go ahead.
I would also say that, you know how critical mental health is, and we in the jail, unfortunately, are the largest provider of mental health services in all of Lepore County, and Ms. Walker is the individual that provides those services, she's needed now more than ever, and we're very fortunate to have somebody with her qualifications, her experience, and her dedication to those who are in need, and to the sheriff's office as well, I just can't state how important her position is to what we provide in our jail.
Thank you.
And she's the only one right now.
She is the only person, that's correct.
We have a motion, was there a second?
Yes.
Who was the second?
I was.
Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all?
Okay, I have, I have the, the number here, it's $55,389, that's someone new coming in, that's where they would start.
With all that education?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is requesting permission to spend from sex offender, sex and violent offender...
Motion to approve.
Second. $575.67 for iPads, motion by Mr. Cunningham, and second by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yagowski.
Yagowski. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Request, you're making me speak real fast, 'cause you guys are too quick. Requesting permission to spend from sex offender, violent offender registry fund for the annual payment services of the iPads in the amount of $1,079.24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Lepore County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP, both funds for annual payment for the body camera in the amount of $114,545.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Councilwoman Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments?
Quick question. After next year, would this, if anything came up like body cameras, would that, would that, would that cover that?
Yep. Mr. Cunningham?
I think it's critical that we remember, just a month or two ago, what happened in Michigan City without body cameras would have been a disaster, and people, they were already arranging for people to be bused in from Detroit and Chicago to protest over some allegation of misbehavior by police officers, and the body camera saved them. And I think that's clearly, we, we have to think in terms of how much better that protects our police officers. I have a nephew who's a police officer down in Georgia, and when he opens his car door to get out of his vehicle, his body camera automatically comes on. He has to literally call the station and tell them, "I'm shutting my body camera off" to go into the bathroom. So in reality, that's the protection they need, and I couldn't support this anymore.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is purchase of police pursuit sedan in the amount of not to exceed $38,712.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat, second by Councilwoman Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions? And just for...
Go ahead. You're gonna probably answer, I was gonna say what about...
Clarification, that this is one car?
It is.
Because you're holding off, because there's no access?
The vehicle that we're replacing, we've already talked to the Commissioner's Office, we're holding that back for county government, we're not trading it, it, as of today, has 121,000 miles on it, it's a 2017, we are not getting other vehicles, because they did not meet the specs when we put out bids, and we received no bids for the pickup trucks that we had...
And the cars that you're trading in?
We're, we're not trading any vehicles.
The report that you give us?
Yes, we have that done, I just didn't wanna burden you, since we're not asking for that large lot of vehicles with all that information, I have it, if you'd like it. Could you please burden me? Yeah, I'll be happy to.
But it's also, as we talked today, it's a, it's an ever-changing, so if a car breaks down or gets wrecked, I mean, you might keep one back, and so things may change on that before they actually...
So let me, let me just make sure that we're right, you want the information now rather than right before we... Please. Okay. Gives us time to do it. Can you put it on flash drive, we, nobody has floppy disk anymore?
I prefer to have it later.
Man. Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Everybody wants it differently? No, I can't, I couldn't put it on anything, all our computers don't have it.
I agree with him on the flash drive.
I'm sorry, sir, I could, I couldn't put it on my computer or anything.
All right. I prefer YouTube video. Just saying.
Vote.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Lepore County Treasurer requesting additional appropriation of Riverboat or ARP for reissuing the tax bills not to exceed $50,000.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Councilwoman Graham Rosa, not, out of Riverboat. Do you have anything you need to add? Madam Treasurer?
Yes, just, just one thing, I'm also requesting that with this money, that you create an overtime account for me, I am, as you know, or may not know, I did not replace two of my employees, so we are working with five employees, two in Michigan City, and three in Lepore, and from that, we've had 94 hours of comp time just in, during the tax collection, so I'm asking you for an overtime account to be used just during tax collection, November and May, and now in June, excuse me, I have, that 94 hours correlates $7,175 of overtime for my three girls that worked from the middle of April until last week, last Friday, excuse me, and, and racked up some overtime.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Mrs. Wensky, did everybody get paid so far up to date?
No.
So we, you're...
What, what are you talking about paid?
The overtime, did anybody?
I mean, overtime, no, we don't have an overtime account, so right now I have to give them ninety, they have 94 hours, and I, I just, I don't know how I'm gonna do that, that's a lot, that's like 30 hours per person.
So we did this, we did this with the Auditor's Office last fall and everything, so this is something, is this something we need to approve now, or?
No, this will wait till next, this will be on the agenda, Joey, for next, for next, Mrs. Wensky.
We can just add it to our next agenda, 'cause you're not done, you're not, mine done be done with everything.
Well, that's true, I, I can, I can have it added to the next agenda, I just wanted...
We'll take care of it.
To talk about it.
So I have a question, are they, are they coming in, are they staying later in the evening, coming in on Saturdays, or?
We, yes, yes, everything.
This is outside of their normal workout.
We normally work till 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, and then they come in on Saturdays and Sundays, they worked on Election Day in the office, this was a big undertaking this time, excuse me, last year we had two part-time people that helped us out, but we didn't have that luxury this year.
All right, we'll add that to our next agenda.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Joey, this isn't normal, though, right? I mean, this is just because of this error?
No, no, it is not normal, no.
But it happened in, in November, too?
No, it will, it probably will happen in this November, but I, I really would like to just have it for this year, and if we have to have it again next year, I'll come back, but this is an unusual, as you know, circumstance, so...
We're gonna add it to our next agenda.
Isn't, isn't it true, Mrs. Wensky, that the reason that you're having to do some of this overtime is because you've reduced your staff, which is what we wanna do? We don't need to have people employed for 12 months a year when we need them for two or three months a year.
Right.
Yes.
So we'll add that to our next...
Couldn't do any more, thank you.
Well, make sure you send a request in for the next agenda.
Mr. President, just to make note that there will be employees that are all, we've, we've had this company before, even with Ms. Hale, the two employees, she, they couldn't get it, it'll only be certain employees that can receive this money, Joey can, her assistant can't.
Right, exempt employees cannot receive it.
Correct.
So is this $50,000 now, that doesn't have anything to do with the overtime?
No, 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 no.
This is like postage, and, or what?
The $50,000 is for the postage, and it's, it's not to exceed 50,000, I'm, I'm trying to work with the vendor right now to see how, how much the mailings are gonna cost. If the, if the, if the tax bills get, get mailed before July 11th, it's cheaper, and July 11th, the postage goes up to 60 cents per, per piece, so I, we're hoping that it doesn't go into July.
Okay, all right.
Is there, I got another question, is there anything, was it DL, who's that?
DLGF.
DLGF, is that bill in yet, or aren't they being, going to bill us also for additional because of the mistakes or error?
Can you repeat that one time?
Is the DLGF gonna bill us for any of their, for their help?
The, the DLGF won't bill us, but we have other bills that are, will be, we'll have a bill from LAO.
Right.
Which, you know, that will go through, probably through, I'm gonna guess it, it'll go through IT, because that's usually who pays their bills, so I'm sure that once we find out how much that is, Darlene will come back to you for that.
Okay.
We're gonna have bills from SEH for, for probably help with the TIF neutralization, we'll have, let me see, we'll have publication.
Hopefully, hopefully some of the $50,000 covers some of that.
Well, that, that has to, publication has to go through, the, the, the publication has to go through the Commissioner's budget.
Right.
So...
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the Treasurer?
So I, I'm sure, I'm sure that next month, we'll have a better handle on all of them.
All right, we're starting to lose you.
Thank you.
Your internet's going out, all right. Seriously, I'm not just trying to get rid of you.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wensky. Next item is the County Coroner requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or ARP for autopsies in the amount of $70,000.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Motion out of Riverboat by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Yagowski, I think, did anybody not get the explanation for this?
I think we need to, we should share.
Would you like to share it with us?
Yes, the reason I'm asking for $70,000 is to carry us over for the end of the year, the prosecutor has insisted that I do autopsies on all drug overdoses in the county, and at $3,500 apiece, they add up very quickly. I've tried to talk to him about his reasoning for doing this, because there's not, not another county around us that does, and he stated that they're not able to prosecute a dealer unless they know for sure that the person did not die of a heart attack, but in fact died of a drug overdose. In the 92 autopsies that we've done so far on drug overdoses, there have been two that...
They're prosecuted.
Have been prosecuted. Out of those 92 autopsies, 91 autopsies, not one came back that they died of a heart attack, or they died of cirrhosis, they all came back that they overdosed on whatever drug it was, and that was the cause of death. know for sure that the person did not die of a heart attack, but in fact died of a drug overdose. In the 92 autopsies that we've done so far on drug overdoses, there have been two that-
They're prosecuted.
Have been prosecuted. Out of those 92 autopsies, 91 autopsies, not one came back that they died of a heart attack, or they died of cirrhosis. They all came back that they overdosed on whatever drug it was, and that was the cause of death. That's not to say that taking drugs for any period of time doesn't cause damage to your heart, or your liver, or your kidneys, it does. So you're going to find that in almost every case, but the cause of death when a person overdoses on drugs is going to be overdose on whatever drug they've taken.
And, and with talking with the prosecutor, his thing is, is that the courts, it's hard to prove it in court if they don't eliminate all the other possibilities of death and say, have you looked at all these? I get it, I get it, but we need to-
But it, but even if you say, I, I mean, I still don't understand the reasoning. If you're going to prosecute the person for giving the person drugs, then prosecute him for giving him the drugs. You have enough evidence to show that he overdosed, so showing that he didn't die of a heart attack, but did in fact die of an overdose, you know, I mean, we have a, a forensic pathologist that does the autopsies, you know? I can do a $217 toxicology study, that that's how the pathologist determines. So if you want me to have him look at the pat, at the toxicology reports and say, yep, that's enough to kill him, I'm sure he'll be happy to do that for a whole lot less than $3,500.
Right. Did you have something you wanted to add, Mr.?
Yeah, what Mr. Lake needs to do is he needs to rule out any other intervening cause, and so that, under the law, you have to show that there was no other intervening cause, whether it be a heart attack, or a stroke, or, or something else that would have killed him.
Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Attorney, do everybody kind of agrees with that? The problem is, the other counties aren't doing that.
Well, I, but, and I'm not here to advocate for Mr. Lake, and I understand what she's saying, but I'm just saying that that's the reasoning that he's giving.
But I'll also bet that those two families, that the two prosecute, that the two were prosecuted, I bet they're really happy that, that the prosecution has been done, and I'm sure there'll be more, and, uh, I don't see a problem with it.
I'd like to know how, you're, you're an elected official.
Yes.
How can another elected official tell you what you have to do?
He is the only person in the county that can force my hand to make a decision like-
Cause I agree with you, I think it's a waste.
I mean, I think two out of 92, the, the numbers just don't add up and make enough sense to me. Um, you know, in the one case, we had to exhume the body. We incurred an $8,000 bill for that, that nobody helped us pay, because after the fact, they decided, oh, let's do an autopsy.
But they did find that person guilty.
They did find that one guilty. The second one, I'm not even sure who that is, because communication never gets back to us. It's just telling me to spend this money out of my budget, but we're not going to tell you how, how anything turns out.
I want to make sure I got this straight. I think I heard Mr. Molenhour say a very factual statement in those two prosecutions. I'm sure those families are very happy.
I'm sure they are.
But that means there's 90 other families that are very disappointed, because there was no prosecution, is that correct?
Right.
Thank you.
But possibly that there will be more, I would think, without talking to the prosecutor, and I mean, he probably wouldn't be able to say too much about that anyway.
I would certainly hope so.
I hope so too. I would think so too.
So maybe we need to obviously address this with the prosecutor, so.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So we got two names, can we do a vote? You want a roll call?
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilman Cunningham.
Aye. I, I want to make sure that my vote is based on the fact that she's ordered out of her department to do this by the prosecutor. She didn't have a lot of choice. I don't agree with the prosecutor's reasoning based on what I just heard, but I'm going to vote aye because she didn't have much choice except to pay for him.
All right.
Well, then I think we should table this and, and bring in John Lake.
How short are you?
To explain.
I think, I believe there's 28,000 left for the rest of the year, and my autopsies every month are landing between 12 and 15,000.
So you, we took this till, we got till June?
Sure.
All right, so now what would you like to do?
Be the person that made a motion.
I withdraw the motion, we'll make a motion to table.
Until?
Until next month.
Right.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to table. Until their next meeting, it'll be on our next agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
You're the elected official, you should be able to, I, I, I don't understand it, but-
We tabled this, we're not discussing it, all right, we're not, we'll, we'll, you'll be back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County EMS requesting additional appropriation of Riverboat or ARP, retrofit three ambulances with power load cot systems in the amount of $73,574 and 91 cents.
Motion to approve out of ARP.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Molenhour. Is there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Laporte County Human Resources requesting additional appropriation on Riverboat or ARP for the external market salary study not to exceed $20,000. Mr. Yagowski or Cunningham, would you like to give an update on the meeting that you guys had?
Oh.
Finance committee had?
Uh, basically, we met, and, um, the contract is, as it was previously written and sent to us, was an open-ended portion of the contract, and we got them to specify that it could not exceed 20,000. The way it was written before, could have been 20,000 added on.
They could have came here, traveled here, charges for all that, but Mr. Cunningham pointed that out.
So we capped it. Is there any, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Oh, I'm sorry, out of ARP.
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I think it's silly to do this without getting an efficiency report at the same time. That's just my opinion.
Then, uh, next month, bring in an inefficiency report with the cost, and we'll-
That's not my job, that's the commissioner's job. But if you want me to do the homework, I'll do the homework.
The commissioners didn't ask for this.
I will do my homework.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Next item on the report, you got that? You got, you good?
Clear enough.
I just want to make sure. Laporte County Circuit Court requesting permission to transfer money from care of inmates, um, to legal intern account, uh, shortage in legal intern account, in the amount of $10,000. We have Judge on the call.
So traditionally, when we've heard, the first 10 years, I, I was here, we used to hire two actual law students as law clerks. With Valparaiso closing, it's, it's kind of hard to find. We were able to get one for the year, but then we get a, what we've been doing, and it's really works out for, for the local students. We take undergraduate students who want to go to law school, and we give them, uh, some work to do during the summer, and, uh, they've gone on to get scholarships to graduate from law schools, and it's done, done well. Um, we need some money in the fund to do it, and the reason why this is the appropriate way is, uh, most of what they do is dealing with a lot of the, uh, requests we get from our two prisons. Uh, we get a lot of lawsuits, we get a lot of, uh, please waive my, my BMV fines, we get a lot of habeas petitions, et cetera, and, um, we've, through the years, we've been able to get it down to a science and, and be, train these kids in how to do all the grunt work for it, and, uh, in the past, we've had other sources for the funds, but this year we just want to transfer from this fund that we always have money left over at the end of the year.
Thank you, Judge. Your pleasure.
All righty.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Molenhour and Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, council comments? Is there any council or attorney comments? Anybody have anything?
I have a council, uh, comment. Just want to point out that I think we all received this sheet in our packet. On tonight's agenda, there were 366,831 dollars in additional appropriations, and we're only in month five. If you multiply that figure by 12, that's over four and a half million dollars, and it's my estimation that this will go higher. This, this 366,000 we spent tonight is going to keep creeping up every month because of fuel cost and food cost and everything else. Um, we just need to be prepared when we work on this 23 budget. We understand there's an inflationary factor of well over 10% at this point in time.
Especially with the fuel, because years ago, we had the fuel cost was, was high, not quite as high as it is now, obviously, but, um, it was very high, and then the fuel then wound up coming down, and we had surplus, but we were adding to everybody's budget there for a while.
I, I'd like to second his, if I may, I'd like to second his point, especially with the notion that the, your growth factor is tied to the new money you collect for the general fund, is tied to the prior five or six-year increase in non-farm income. So